This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, I guess maybe, oh, it's now being recorded. I don't know if anybody heard that or not. Uh, shoot, where's the volume? Oh, no. Now we're up. All right, there we go. All right, it's six thirty. It is Monday, February seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. We are going into an executive session for the City Council of Woodland. As present, we have Councilmember Burke, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Rounds, Councilmember Holland, and Councilmember Chapman. Uh, Ms. Roland is supposed to be joining us online. Is she joining us online for this portion? On telephone, uh, when we get into the room. As you can see, Mr. Plaza is not here. As of, um, this afternoon, we received his resignation effective immediately. Um, so as we, as we move forward, at the next meeting, we'll have a process, um, for his, for the process to replace him. So at this time, we'll go ahead and get everybody, uh, situated and just kind of throw everything out. So, um, we appreciate his time and I'll, I'll say something else during the council, regular council meeting. So at this time, it is six thirty-one. We're going into executive session for R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero, section one subsection G, as in George, to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment or to review the performance of a public employee. The time is now six thirty-one. We will be in executive session for approximately twenty minutes.
This conference will now be recorded.
The time is now six fifty-one. We will be extending for approximately six minutes to, uh, six fifty-seven.
This conference will now be recorded.
The time is now six fifty-six. We are out of executive session. We will go into regular session in approximately four minutes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Are you ready, Mrs. Anderson? Oh, okay, thank you. All right, everyone, the time is now seven oh-one. If I could please get you to silence your cell phones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Yeah.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
All right, uh, Ms. Roland is online this evening, and I made a statement at six thirty. There wasn't many people listening. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Um, Mr. Plaza has resigned as effective this afternoon via email, uh, from his position on city council. So come the next meeting, we will be putting out, uh, the process to council. I believe the rural state, we have ninety days to fill his position, uh, or find a qualified candidate. So we will be going through that process and we'll bring that to council on, um, what is the next, uh, next, uh, the next, on the twenty-second of February, uh, for discussion and, uh, to lay out that process. We just found that out this afternoon. And we have no presentations this evening. And moving on to citizen communications for items not on the agenda, Mr. Belial.
Good evening, everybody. And I just wanted to remind everybody about plan dates.
Um.
June sixteenth through the nineteenth. We're doing the full show this year again, uh, since we haven't been able to do it the last couple of years. We're going crazy this year. We're gonna do more than we usually do, actually. So tomorrow, we'll have our meeting at Columbia Bank, six o'clock. Hopefully, there's enough room if anybody else is supposed to come, but, uh, we'll be, I announce some details as we get closer here, be able to fireworks and music, stages, cartoons.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the gallery that failed to sign up for items not on the agenda? Now is your opportunity to step forward. All right, seeing none, and I don't see. Is there an extra chief key? Grab Mr. Burke, uh, agenda, please. Is there anyone online for items not on the agenda? And I thought we had somebody joining us for not on the agenda. Okay, what's that? Yeah. Okay. We're good, thank you, chief. All right, seeing no one else, moving on to items on the agenda, Terry Casey. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Thank you for having me to speak for you. Please bear with me, I'm an auditorium speaker, so. Those of you who don't know me, I'm in like twenty-first, finishing up twenty minutes or like twenty-first year of the city board of people. I'd like to thank my dedicated service to this community and the citizens without question. This is the top of me. But, um, the recent proposal for employment contract to vote in this position, including the civil services association off guard. However, by my understanding, recently, we had needed. I asked you a direct question, and from my perspective, you pulled the face of lies. That's, I'm trying to get my, I'm still trying to wrap my head around that, but here not to be too much of on, on, on the subject matter. Uh, I just, I'm still trying to find why it's some base of arbitrary, you couldn't use them on us. But anyway, not to get too far into the weeds, I'd like to address council, if it's not due, to vote down this position. And if not voted down, at least table it so we have a little bit of time to address it. The, uh, from my understanding, and I don't have time to go through the entire civil service rules and what the city board is, uh, personal policy manual, um, none of it seems to, I do not know, the whole state. It seems to be a complete departure from past practice. I have notes in my, got all the hearing, not a trans speaker. Why, currently, it kind of, I say kind of, it's our administrative sergeant. The job duties are very similar for probably half of that job description. And I don't know how many of y'all remember, few years ago, I think we had a CACO committee that actually addressed the needs of the department. And this administrative sergeant, the title position was recommended, approved by the voters, the legislative, uh, the, the, uh, period, city service rule of procedures, and the civil, the civil service rule of procedures, and cities own matter, policy target, and what it calls. I don't have the time to listen to violation, but gladly sit down with each and every one willing to allow, uh, for emailing to you, I'd be there. The, and I'd like to also point out that we first, it just had nothing to do with nepotism. My understanding is she is completely spread away, probably phenomenal assets to the agency. That's, that's not the point I want to make. It's the process will not be remotely addressed. We have, I mean, it seems like it's urgent, seems like there was a complete lack of transparency. We just heard about this, Burke. We have a qualified member who could have applied for it, but the hearing was a, we had already posted for two weeks, the first year with, with the hearing, Burke, I believe. And so completely certain only, any member of our current agency could apply. There are service, civil service rules in place that would allow even maybe someone that doesn't have all the requirements to petition for waivers. Our parent chief, our former chief, one of our former chiefs, had to petition civil service, the way of education requires, and we're, we're, we're usually experiencing service. Those things are in place for a reason, for the, it is a competitive task. Civil service by itself, the whole process of being hired, every one of us that worked for the police department took a competitive test, seems like that was really important in this situation. And now the really unfortunate part, whether you like it or not, it, it gives the appearance of nepotism. Now nepotism is by our city standard relatives, but by a lot of other standards, it's close friends. Now, here again, this has got nothing to do, next to nothing to do with this sort of team, right? It says she can be phenomenal last and the process should have come in place, how it should have come in place. And so every, every, that they currently should have to have those, uh, realistic, realistic desire should have been afforded the same courtesy, um, that has been granted by previous chiefs, current chief, and spelled out civil service. Now, as they go to petition civil service to waivers, remember to have a competitive testing application process. It's just, it's really unfortunate that it seems that this relationship between police association and cities, because there's sixty million that have that serial, I would guess, go through it for that. You talk to me about trust, right? Remember that conversation? This is, this is a complete lack of transparency on the side of the board. To finish up.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Casey.
I opposed to it, but it'd be really nice to have it.
Anyone in the gallery who failed to sign up for items on the agenda? Now is your opportunity to step forward. Mrs. Butler.
In light of the discussion I just heard, I would like to support the table in that presentation.
Anyone else for items on the agenda? Anyone online for items on the agenda? Seeing no one, thank you. Moving on to agenda approval.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Rounds, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Uh, Mrs. Anderson.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Roland.
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman.
Aye. The ayes have it. Moving on to reports of city council.
Well, I had coffee last week with Ms. Orquez, and, um, it was very, um, very pleasurable to meet her, and, um, I think she's very qualified for the position that we're talking about tonight. But that's about the only thing I've done here recent. I know some people have gone to the, uh, the chamber banquet, and so we can talk about that.
I attended the chamber banquet. I didn't make it through the entire chamber banquet. I had to leave early for another, I wanted to go to, uh, but it was a nice showing, and , uh, it was a pleasure when you can, uh, go and meet new people.
All right, thank you. Moving on to reports of standing committees, public safety.
Uh, we met today, um, at five-thirty, and, um, we discussed that, um, well, first of all, under new business, Mr. Peterson and his wife were present and wanted to talk to us about, um, doing an ordinance to allow all-wheel-terrain vehicles. I guess Vancouver and Kalamazoo have accepted the ordinances, and they'd like for us to take a look at that and approve it also. Um, the police department lieutenant contract, the P S C members further, uh, requested further discussion at tonight's executive session. Department update, Chief Kelly informed the committee that Officer Warner will be starting Basic Law Enforcement Academy tomorrow, and a lateral candidate has been given a conditional offer of employment. Chief Kelly is waiting for the results of a psychological exam. If there is a positive outcome of the exam, the officer will be given, uh, an offer of employment. This will leave one position to be filled. Oral boards for the vacant spot will be later this month. Um, we didn't have anything under old business, and we adjourned at six oh-seven, and our next meeting will be March the seventh of two thousand and twenty-two at five-thirty P M.
Questions for Mrs. Rounds? I believe the public safety committee was canceled this evening? Okay. Next meeting for that is going to be March seventh at five-thirty. Moving on to reports of advisory committees, Chamber of Commerce will be reporting at the second meeting in, uh, of the month. Uh, Council of Government, I attended a meeting with that. It was my first meeting. It was the introductory. Uh, I was placed on the executive board for the cog, uh, so I'm still trying to figure out what my role is going to be with that, but I know that we have a call for projects that I believe I passed on to, uh, Ms. Coleman, uh, for, uh, dollars that will be given away, uh, for safety projects, I believe. Is that correct? The safety projects? That was transportation. Um, there's two. Yes, I'm still trying to learn my role. So more to come with cog as we move forward. And D W R, have you had a meeting yet? No, okay. All right, moving on to reports of city officers. Uh, I'll go first. I attended the chamber dinner. I saw Mr. Burke and Mr. Smith there. I think, Mr. Chapman, you were supposed to be there. I'm assuming you got called out to work? No.
He was actually there.
Were you there?
Yeah.
Did we talk?
No.
I didn't think so. I don't recall seeing you.
I was at the table with, yeah.
I was expecting to see you there, and I thought, oh, okay. Gotcha. Nice.
I love that person.
No, uh, and I don't know that anything else has really transpired. Uh, we had a meeting with the port today, uh, so we're working through some things there. I attended the port meeting last week, and, uh, more to come to council, I believe, during retreat on that on the nineteenth, so don't forget about that. We'll wait for Ms. Miller to report on that, uh, at the second meeting of the month. Uh, council retreat, don't forget, is on the nineteenth. We'll be starting at eight A M. here, uh, for coffee, and then nine A M. start time, we'll have that agenda out. We've already started working on that. Uh, Mr. Boyce will be meeting, Mr. Boyce, I'll be meeting on that later, too. What's it, two thirty's out, two thirty's out, uh, in this room. We'll be, uh, nailing down the agenda and getting that out to you as soon as possible. And in light of the comments this evening about transparency, I think that we remember the conversation, uh, a little bit differently. I believe that I was probably extremely too honest, uh, during our conversation, uh, but we will agree to disagree with that. Moving on, Mr. Boyce.
Okay, I wanted to remind everyone, the next council meeting is on the twenty-second, which is Tuesday, holiday. See, on the nineteenth, the council retreat, and the twenty-second, we're doing our city council. Uh, wanted to let everyone know, we're still meeting with, uh, both the events of the teams, for just a quick one, public works. We have another negotiation session scheduled later in the month. Events ongoing.
Which will be discussed in our next executive session at the end of this meeting.
And, uh, as the mayor stated, we're working on the agenda for the, um, city council retreats. When we get it out, we'll do a draft agenda. If you have feedback, please let me know. Don't email everyone's acts. We don't have any different meetings. Let me know in the council chat, if they still want to see the rest of the, the usual, we'll make sure that happens. It's going to be short tonight, that's what I have. I mean, I, I should mention to the lieutenant contract, there were a couple of cycles, so we look at salary, and we look at the, we need to call around, the numerical numbers, the written narrative number, uh, so, uh, wanted to point that out to you.
Questions for Mr. Boyce? Seeing none, Mr. Randolph? Mrs. Anderson? Oh, wow, all right, fire away. Holy smokes.
We're all excited, trying to have this. So I tell you, we used to do fifty-five W two and forty-one seven ninety-nine, with those ninety-six information records, so we probably can get any ready. Um, at a hundred, we have to file with Congress, we file on ninety-two with Congress already, but our top story right now, that's all valid, so, uh, file on ten ninety-nine with Congress. I'm sure that's going to be different, because we're almost at the top there, where we, we, you know, we're ensuring it's, um, a few more employees, which we already have, but from late, we'll have more than a hundred information records, but we know the place we're at now, so that'll be nice, so we'll definitely have to look at that. So, I was attending this three point five last year, payment for rain of one point nine four eight thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars per cent. That was for utilities, permits, business licenses, miscellaneous terms, miscellaneous payments, we're seeing them now, as to all the other stuff, payments, right? That's for a whole year, and I thought it was interesting, wasn't it? Um, we went live with the master business license on January twenty-seventh. We already did our first payment, the new license of three hundred and twenty dollars. We'll be the second payment, we're getting it tomorrow, eighty dollars. Um, there's twenty-two business licenses this year, went out in November of two thousand and twenty-one, so we just started in income, so there will be such a complex of, of business licenses beginning of the year for the state, and from now on, the biggest, it's very, I hope we will, we can, we will, future business licenses for like sellers, so we will not be doing standard business licenses, we won't do the state. There, there will be two D, that's on two heads open, resident and non-resident. Everybody will be in one of those guys. Um, if you tell you, personally, in December, January, and February months, working on all three of those months, all month, it's fifty-four, it's the evening, there's a soft way you gotta be changing what period you're in, if you forget, and you gotta go back and change those. And another great answer is after, I know you want to know these things, so. We issued a hundred and sixty-four checks in January, a hundred and twenty-seven with twenty checks, this other payroll of thirty-one, this first, this check, that is not included in the other side, so that's just a manual check. I'll give you checks, the payroll check, obviously, in case we're wondering about that number six. I'm glad it worked.
Thank you. Questions for Mrs. Anderson?
By using the master business license, how much more is it costing the small business to get their license?
I believe it's, um, fifteen dollars now.
Fourteen dollars?
It was nine, way back when, that all started, but we put it off, we put it off, we didn't have to do it in the management.
Can I just say that it's refreshing that you're excited by your department?
Well, I, I, I said before about how excited I am about signing out, because well, that's how you build a plan.
I was gonna say, I'm seeing.
I'm completely excited about what we think, and all, everybody's excited about their own level of interest. I am interested in signing out.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Uh, Chief Kelly.
Your report.
All right, thank you very much. Fire is not with us this night. Uh, Mr. Gardner, Community Development.
Yeah, so, um, I would like to, um, repeat the process, the time conditions, the seventeen. There are three couple of periodic items on the agenda. One is the residentially commercial mixed use, double tow, uh, proposal. The agriculture zoning is the second one, and then the third one is, you're, uh, the other one, the ten seven, uh, to have to be revisited. Not in that particular order, I would decide to do one, which is the first, the cost of the market project on the agenda. Uh, I'd also like to point out that the twenty-one annual report for community justice is out. It should be available online, looking for it right now. But, um, it should be available online. Find it, it'll be a call, I'll make sure to get copies that I, I delivered in from paper, that's the last meeting, and it'll be provided, you have it on the paper. So if you have any questions?
All right, seeing none, thank you. Uh, Ms. Golden, Public Works. All right, thank you. And before we move on, I want to remind everyone, since Ms. Miller is not here, uh, legislative calls with the business chamber tomorrow morning at seven thirty A M. Uh, the link is, I think, online on their website. Yeah. Um, I know, Ms., I did join that call last week with Mr. Orcat. Um, I'm not sure who's tomorrow. I think it might be Peter.
It's, uh, Peter Abarno.
Peter Abarno, uh, Lewis County. So, um, great information, so I encourage everyone to join in on those if you have the time. It's thirty minutes, um, of hardcore information of what's going on at the ledge session right now. Moving on to consent items.
I'd like to move, uh, remove consent item E.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Burke, seconded by.
Remove it for discussion.
Uh, Councilmember Burke, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Consent items A, B, C, D, and F for approval. Mrs. Anderson.
Councilmember Chapman.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Roland.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Consent items A, B, C, D, and F have been approved. Consent item E, employment contract for police lieutenants.
I, what do you want to know, what, I hold it?
Uh, motion.
The court of discussion. Motion, motion for the session.
Approval, nonapproval? What's the, what's the motion on the floor?
I want to, well, I want to talk about it before we vote on it.
Okay.
Was that what you were waiting for? We had talked about it.
Wait, uh, wait, it's, uh, come to, to a, a process of an action item now. So typically, action items will move for approval or disapproval with a second, and then discussion ensues.
Move the, move it to the action item. Aye.
For discussion.
For discussion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Moved by Councilmember Burke, seconded by Councilmember Rounds. Councilmember Burke.
I, oh.
No.
You're up.
Oh, okay, so we're in discussion now?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I kind of agree with, uh, altercation. I'm concerned about how the process was done. I felt that, I don't think it was done correctly, as I mentioned. There's a lot of problems with the contract, and I think we need to step back and fix problems before we go further. That's more, I agree.
Councilmember Rounds?
Well, um, I guess I have no comment on that, but, um, it was advertised on the web. Is that correct? The position?
The city website, it was.
Yeah, the city website, is what I mean. So, um, if I'm not mistaken, um, Frank, that was done correctly.
Yes, it has to be publicly advertised, but there's no such thing, the numbers, you have to read that from all the way, but, I mean, this is where people.
And when was this advertised? Can someone come?
I, so I, I will remind council that during open discussion, I'm gagged.
I heard it was advertised February third, when the agenda was, was to be released.
Okay. It wa, it was on, it's dated, the applicant, the thing on the city website is dated for January seventh.
Okay.
And I do know that, I looked a couple of weeks ago, and I did remember seeing that on there.
Okay.
With all the other officer positions that are available.
Okay, so if the, if they just found out about it last Thursday, is that, is that what I understood?
One, one more replacement, we're like, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't think so, no. Um, so that's, that's home, almost the whole month, that it was listed, is that correct? Is that right?
It would, it would be.
Miss Holland?
Yeah, yeah, the app, the thing on the city website is dated for January seventh.
Right, okay. So, um, I don't. So, um, I don't know, it, is this how we normally?
Nothing.
Pete, is this how we normally advertise for people?
Well, when you're, when you're talking non-reading positions, sometimes we send it on the website.
Okay.
We send it on the website, and, uh, newspaper, uh, sometimes like, uh, when this is a meeting position, we're looking for certified, uh, waterfront technicians in actual center of the males, to be certified operator in the state, uh, in some situations.
And listed it on the website, the city website, okay? Okay. So I, I don't know, like I said, um, I had coffee with, um, Ms. Ortiz, and, um, I think she is highly qualified for the position that we're looking at to hire. Um, very nice lady, very nice lady, and I, um, I would have no qualms in trying her. I don't, you know, I don't know, um, I know, um, Mrs. Rowland has a few words to say, too, I think, uh, as far as, um, how she felt, she talked with her, I had to leave after about an hour and a half, but I think she sat with her for about three hours and visited, so, um, that's all, that's all I have to say, so.
Uh, Mr. Smith, we'll come back to you after everyone has a turn.
So it sounds like the, is it public safety met with her? Um, I think everybody was supposed to, but, uh, Councilmember Chapman didn't make it to it.
Wasn't able to.
It sounds like two of the three met with her. It sounds like she's very qualified. Um, I'm, I'm not on the hiring committee. Um, what I'm sitting before me right now is if I have a qualified candidate for the position that was approved by council during the budget process, and it sounds like she's very qualified, um, there's going to be hurt feelings in this process, um, not everybody's going to be happy with it, and, uh, it's a tough position to begin, because I think there's some people in the Woodland Department that are qualified for this, and would be a good candidate. What I have before me right now is a good candidate that the executive team has said that they wanted to move forward with. Um, I don't see anything that would stop it at this point. Um, after we sat through the executive session and talked about her qualifications, um, Ms. Rowland, Councilmember Rowland had some good stuff about it. Uh, if she could, uh, elaborate on that, it would be nice to hear again, so that everybody could hear it.
Uh, yes, I, um, is it my turn?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Rowland.
Okay, sorry. Um, yeah, no, um, when I first sat in there, uh, the first question I asked her was, uh, what's your favorite dinosaur? Because it's kind of an icebreaker question, and she answered it just as intentionally as she did any serious questions, and I loved that. Um, we ended up losing track of time, we ended up chatting for three hours, and I had a lot of questions, um, and she very patiently answered them. She really assured me, um, she comes from a place of compassion, of empathy. She explained, um, processes to me that I had always, I was always curious about, like, when, um, about investigating, about responding to calls, about even just, um, just the rapport and how she interacts with, um, people of all types, of victims, of suspects, of anyone. And she, her key thing to me was when I asked her about her interaction, she said, well, the first thing I think of is, you know, most time I'm meeting someone, it's not their best day. And just knowing that she came from that level of empathy into any situation, I think, just really put me at ease. And I just feel like she's a very genuine and a very caring person, and she takes her job seriously, and she's very knowledgeable. Um, I absolutely enjoyed talking with her, and like I said, we lost track of time, it ended up being three hours, I had to go pick up my daughter from school, otherwise I think we probably would have ended up continuing to talk, but I just, I have a really good feeling about her, and she seems perfect.
Thank you, Ms. Rowland.
Oh, I didn't even hear.
Mr. Chapman?
I do. There's, my mic on?
Your mic on? No, one more. There you go.
How this came about, it's kind of, there's a lot of, I know, in the past, Mayor Finn talked about having a lateral, not a lateral, but a lieutenant coming in to help with chief, and then have be like next predecessor coming, you know, as in grooming, replace chief when he goes up, you know, as in other positions are doing that. Kind of talked about it, and then ideas air, and also there's no more talk about it, because we've never had a position or a person, we don't, five, one, two. Then we started getting some lateral transfers and qualifications, and this individual came in, and, hey, great, you know, I said that, and also it popped in again, I think the way it came about, kind of left a bad taste in a lot of people's mouths, and how it came popping into us. She is a great qualification, very qualified, good job, stuff like that. I think this, how everything kind of came together, didn't ball, didn't jive together too well, and still, like oil and vinegar, and that chick jar pretty good, because it 's gel, but hopefully everything will calm down and figure it out. How that's going to happen, I don't know. That's where Mayor Finn and the chief will get, ha, clash out with the, uh, the, uh, the union, definitely have your, uh, guys in their jobs, so there's no job or money for being taken away from them. How they're going to work that, I don't know. That's, you guys, there's some stuff to do with that. Uh, I've caught a lot of, a lot of heat and citizens, and what's going on, he said, yes, I don't know, we'll find out Monday night, and we'll sit on discussion and talk about it, because some of this stuff is kind of interesting, it's in short notice. We're discussing the individual, she's very qualified, and very nice guy, and I think she'd make a nice decision to the, to the force. Because, um, kind of uneasy on how it all came down the pipe, it's kind of a, little distraught tone right now, so, that's my two cents on the whole, the whole agenda.
Ms. Holland, do you have anything?
I do. Sorry, you're gonna have to hold up a second. Um, so, to agree with Carl, we really don't know anything any quicker than anybody else intel. The agenda comes out, and then we read it, and then while you're eating lunch with somebody, you see somebody's blowing it up on social media and seem to know a whole heck of a lot more than we know about anything. Um, and that's cool, but I, I mean, just to kind of go back, I, I don't think that just because, uh, this particular candidate has an employment background in the same statewide agency that the mayor does, I don't think that necessarily means they're besties, and that he handpicked her to come to Woodland. I mean, I, that's kind of, just, that's snarky. I mean, I, I think we could all agree that there's, um, a little more thought put into things than who can we put in place in our town. Um, that may have been how things were done, and, and I'm giving you the benefit of the doubt, I'm just, I'm just saying, um, I feel like, because I know people, I feel like, even though the candidate, um, is highly qualified, because I know nothing except a name on this, and so I Googled the person, Google's an amazing tool, um, I'm, uh, sounds like an amazing person that could come to our town and, and really bring a different perspective, um, to the police department with her background. Um, what I know about people, though, is that since there's some hubbidi-bum about the process that has taken place, that, um, it's, if, if council chooses to move forward with this contract, what I feel would happen is we are setting the candidate up for a disadvantage of walking into, um, kind of a hostile situation. Um, and I love everybody, don't, don't get me wrong, I just think that, um, people might have perceptions in, in their head, and they may not intentionally treat somebody in a hostile manner, but it would be kind of a tumultuous situation for somebody to come in. Um, a lot of valid things have been discussed. I have to, I have to defer when some, um, to the information disseminated from, um, Officer Casey, he took the time to voice his concerns. Um, I, we did get an email, kind of afternoon-ish, and I have a real job during the day, and I was busy, and I didn't really read that until just before meeting. Um, I feel like, and I use the word feel, um, just because that sounds nice, but I feel like the best approach would be to make, um, people happy, to make a lot of people happy about this, as if it went back however long, I don't know, six weeks, whatever, a month, whatever you need to do, whatever people think is okay, to open it up, so whoever wants to apply for this position can apply for the position, everybody goes through the process, and however that works out, if it's the current person, then that's how it all works out, right? I mean, that sounds fair. And that, that would be me, just because of what we've learned tonight, and some of the thought processes that I've had while people have been talking. Um, I just, from my, for, just for me, I just want to say, I think everybody is well aware of my utilization of social media over the years to make things in the forefront of people's minds, and that has worked out well in things like getting Prop One to pass, and, and disseminating information that wasn't well-known in the community concerning our police department. As a Woodlander, what I would like, and I am guilty of utilizing social media in that way, what I would like, as a Woodlander, is if rather than people have commentary online that is not part of public record, uh, people have suspicions or want to rumor monger or whatever, it would be really nice if they would just shoot us an email or come here and say it, so we can have that dialogue. I literally have certain people blocked on social media, so I don't see this, I don't see a lot of things, because I am continually harassed and stalked by someone, so I just kind of block them on social media, and I'm allowed to do that, so I don't get to see a lot of the things that other people seem to see. But me, it would be really nice, is if somebody, I think people are aware how I feel about police department, for instance, that if you have something like this, shoot them, shoot an email, or DM you, or something, I would love to hear it firsthand. I don't, I, I really, it bothers me when people send me screenshots of things, and I don't know anything about what they're talking about. And I think not everybody here is sitting on Facebook. I don't think, Carol, I don't think you hang out on Facebook.
No.
So, so you would not know until we get here, and then it's like, we're the big jackasses, because we're not picking sides before we get here. We literally don't know anything faster than anybody else. We come here, and we get to have the conversation for everybody. So if you don't come here and be part of the conversation, we just assume that the information we're hearing in this room, or what's on paper, is all there is to it. So I just want to put that out there, because I have this couple of seconds to have that, that way of saying that, because it's part of public record that I said that, so there you go.
Mr. Burke?
Okay, uh, I got a couple of questions, so you can ask the chief.
Yep.
Chief, uh, when you're hiring an officer, or looking for an officer, where do you put your information? I information? Yeah, in other words, what do you want? I guess I, I don't understand.
In other words, when you post the application?
Where the advertisement goes?
Yeah.
Uh, goes on, uh, public safety testing, it goes on, uh, I think we, we put, I'll keep back in on this, the Wau, uh, the Waukesha, uh, site, um, CDC, the city site? Yeah.
Okay, so I get quite a few sites. So if you're looking for a qualified applicant, unless you've got somebody in mind that you want to hire, um, when do you put it on this Washington State Criminal Justice Training Center, an opening, uh, the Washington State Police and Sheriff Association, the Public Safety Testing, or any other local newspaper?
Yes.
Okay, why didn't you do that for lieutenant? I can answer that question. I didn't have it. I didn't think so. Okay, that's all.
Mr. Smith?
I understand I'm delaying the process and trying to go through the process. And I've been, uh, I've seen people get hired, and I've seen people not get hired before, they didn't like the process. And there's always a question of why wasn't somebody chosen over somebody else? And it falls back to, is it going to change if we keep going with this? Um, if there was somebody that, uh, the executive team wanted to hire out of the city of Woodland, they would have done it. They would have approached people, but they did not, and it's, it's hurt feelings, and it's tough, and it's, it's, it's never, never stood well, but I don't think it's going to change the outcome here. Um, I think we have a good candidate, um, and even Officer Casey said she's qualified, there's no question in her qualifications. So when I'm sitting here before everybody, telling me about the qualifications of somebody, and how good of a candidate it is, if we delay this, um, does this candidate walk away because of, of animosity in here? And it's through no, through no fault of hers, if she's a good candidate, uh, I don't think it's going to change the process here. And if it gets sent out there again, it's probably going to be somebody else again. We'll be in the same boat here in another couple of weeks, and I don't think it needs to keep being delayed and pushed down the road.
Mrs. Rouse?
Well, I just want to comment that, um, I'm, I'm one, that I love our good police department, I really do. They do a great job, um, but unlike Mr. Smith, if we delay this process, we could lose this, um, the prospective candidate for the job. And again, like him, it could be the same outcome here in a few weeks if we delay the process, and this candidate could walk away and get a job someplace else, and I think it'd be very sad for Woodland if we lose this person. But, um, I think our police department is great, um, I can't say enough about them. They do a great job, and, um, I hate that, uh, it, it's, um, but like you said, there's always hurt feelings, and, and sometimes you have to do tough things, and I hope with whatever decision we make tonight, that, um, the officers and everybody will get along and not look at it, um, in a hostile manner, or if we wait, whoever else comes in, you know, I just hope that, um, the outcome is, is a good one, so.
Further discussion? Mr. Burke?
So if we don't post it anywhere, we're not going to get it, find out whether we've got a better candidate or not? So we got picked from one person? You know, it's one of the big things, if you don't post it and try to get some applicants that have, are qualified, no, we're picking from one, basically one person, and she's going to be the best, because that's all we talked to. So I think we did the process wrong. Our council vote, no. That's it. And I appreciate the comment, I was, we need to... And I appreciate the comment I was reading on that.
Noted. Anything further, Ms. Rowland?
Yes, um, I agree with, uh, Mr. Smith. I think that, to add on to it, I think it would be doing a disservice to Ms. Ortiz to force her to wait. Um, again, because some people felt like it wasn't done properly, because like Mr. Smith said, we could lose out on a, it, we could, this, it could happen again. This could happen in circle and circle and circle until, it could go a whole nother year until the position's filled. Because at the end of the day, someone's going to be unhappy, and we can't make everyone happy. But I think that Ms. Ortiz is super qualified, I don't... And again, I want to, I'd want to respect her, and I think it would be, I don't think it would look, be a good look for Woodland to lead a candidate on and then have her wait another thirty days, because it makes us look disheveled and unprofessional. So I, I'd like to see us move on with her.
Thank you, Ms. Rowland. Further discussion? Seeing nothing else, Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on consent item E, employment, employment contract for police lieutenants.
No. Councilmember Round?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
No.
Councilmember Burke?
No.
We have a three-three, Mr. Randolph.
No, again, insurance money. Insurance pay and a paycheck for it. And of course, with state statutes, the mayor, the, the council, and what is the, this is...